Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, June 6, 2016. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda, and we have several additions to the agenda since they was sent to the newspaper for publication. One is a mayoral proclamation for the Salvation Army's 90th anniversary. The next is to approve the order in the matter of a hazardous house at 705 8th Street. And item number eight is to approve the agreement between Boise White Paper LLC and the city to approve the annexation subject to waiving the road improvement costs for the Moonlight Rock Road. With those additions, what is your pleasure with the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the additions.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the agenda with the additions.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the agenda and additions.
I have one question.
Please.
On the addition of number six in the matter of the house located at 705 8th Street, was the owner of the house notified that this would be action taken this evening?
Yes, it should be in the package.
Fair enough.
Further discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried and the agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes of the May 16 regular city council meeting.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kaler to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question.
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried and minutes for May 16 are approved. May 31 special city council meeting minutes.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question.
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved for this special meeting. Thank you. We'll go to the payment of claims and transfers. We have a transfer to Fund Number 101, the general fund, from Fund Number 812 Lodging Tax Fund of $124.33. We have regular City of International Falls claims of $338,092.43. Airport Commission claims of $115,664.94. Your pleasure with the transfer and the accounts payable.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kaler to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of the claims.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion, the resolution, or the transfer or claims. None? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the transfers and payment of claims are approved. Thank you. For the audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time on any matter that is not on the agenda?
I'll be respectful, I won't be very long. I, again, I'll be respectful. Did a little thing about a week before our little meeting, this is the first time I've unfolded this, and this is the, and if you don't think I'm telling the truth, you can ask my wife because I did in front of her. But before we had our meeting, that's what I wrote down on a piece of paper and I gave it to her to carry for me. Read it to regarding our decision about whether we would have disciplinary action against an individual on the North Clutch Board. We know that's, everybody knew. I think it's too bad. I think some of us are getting the wrong information, unfortunately, whether we're afraid or whatever to cross anybody or do anything as far as doing things in the future, more HR, more vetting, it's kind of the cart for the horse because I think a horrific crime's been committed. And I mean crime, hostile work environment, and it's absolutely true, it's absolutely factual, and there's enough proof for that to have been proved to the council. Unfortunately, the council didn't pass it, they have that right, majority wins. But I do think it was a tragedy, and as far as the governor's concerned, what the individual does with the governor, I have no idea. What the individual does with legal, I have no idea. I think the League of Minnesota Cities could get tied into this state of conflict on both sides, wouldn't they, Steve? So, anyway, you can answer me if you want.
Well, I don't think Legal Minnesota Cities would have a conflict.
Well, they have to be representing both. Okay. Anyway, I think it was a tragedy, I think it was bad, and it seems to me, and don't, again, don't take offense, but this is me and this is on the streets, it seems like in International Falls with that decision, and a lot of people told me, a lot of people, 20, that it's okay to say the C-word in International Falls. When will it be okay to say other words? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council on any matter that's not on the agenda? Thank you. We'll move to public hearing. We have the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 15 of the fifth series to amend the Code of Ordinances, Section 5.3, on the limitation on ownership to allow the issuance of on-sale liquor licenses to the same person for multiple sites in the City of International Your pleasure with the second and final reading.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to adopt the second and final reading.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question on the motion or the ordinance change? None? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, second reading is passed, and ordinance changes will be approved. Thank you. Go to the opening of bids, and we have a quote that was secured by the Street Park Commissioner on the painting of the band shell, and we have the quote of $7,560 from Adam McIntyre Painting LLC to prep and paint the band show for the festivities of the July 4th and the all-class reunion.
Move.
Motion to accept that low quote by Counselor Jacksaw. Second by Counselor Kaler. Question on the motion or the quote?
What color?
That's a good question, probably the same unless somebody's got something different.
I do not, I like the color.
I think the Commissioner was looking for input, but he, there wasn't anybody...
Not much given?
Not much given.
Oh, yeah.
That's my thing. I like, look at it. Can we be okay, pink? Proud to be in pink.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried and the low quote is accepted. Thank you. The consent agenda, we have two items. Approve the automatic extension of joint powers agreement for the home program assistance. Item two is to authorize paramedic Zachary Schofield to attend the class for certification on the PALS as a PLAAS instructor, approve the acquisition of training books, and approve the purchase of the Simulade Pediatric ALS Training Mannequin for a low quote of $780.45, and further to authorize the total expenditures not to exceed $1,300 from the ambulance department training line item.
I will move the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. Thank you. To new business, and the first item is the mayoral proclamation in the observance of the Salvation Army's 90th anniversary of serving International Falls.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kaler to approve the proclamation and its publication.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation? None? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, proclamation is approved. Thank you. Item number two is a resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the International Association of Machinists Local W-33 to conduct a raffle on September 16, 2016.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the permit for the raffle is approved. Thank you. Item number three is the appointment of Jared Baldwin to firefighter engineer with wages and benefits in accordance with the Woodworkers Local W-33 Union Agreement, effective date June 15, 2016. Chief Manasa.
Counselors, as you may remember, we do hire off the Civil Service Commission, Fire Civil Service Commission. The last test they conducted was on November 16, 2015. That list is good for a two-year period. From that list, we got two qualified applicants, Benjamin Mortensen and Jared Baldwin. Ben Mortensen was hired in November 2015 to replace firefighter engineer Bruce Bergstrom, and so that leaves Jared on the list, only one eligible on the list. From the roster provided, I do respectfully request the city council to approve the placement of, approve the placement of the next applicant on the list to replace Clayton Barr as a firefighter engineer, and that was Jared Baldwin. I'm confident he'd be an excellent engineer, he's been on the department for several years since October 2005. He's been a spare driver in the past, he's familiar with the trucks, and he's familiar with the department. We did select, I don't believe it was, is on the motion, we selected a shift for Jared, his first day will be the 15th of June if approved, starting on night shift. And then to follow this up to, I'd also further request that approval to have the Civil Service conduct another testing process for the apparatus driver engineer just to replace the, because we did exhaust the list, to make a valid list for the next two years.
We'll handle those in separate motions. First is to approve the appointment of Jared Baldwin to firefighter engineer.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the appointment? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, appointment is approved. Thank you. And then we have the request to the Fire Civil Service Commission to conduct testing for roster of firefighter apparatus driver operators.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, and approval given to the Civil Service Commission to conduct a testing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I have the next item too, so.
Yes, you do. Item number four, approve the contract with Premier Pyrotechnics and expenditure of $2,000 for the 2017 Icebox Days fireworks to be held on January 21, 2017.
Just an explanation for the council, the reason this is on here right now, we are one of the few people, places in Minnesota that get fireworks in the wintertime. This requires a special delivery from Premier, it requires myself or somebody else to meet in Bemidji and pick them up. We can have them shipped with our 4th of July shipment, kind of save paperwork and shipping. We store them for the six months if at any chance, we do not do the Icebox Days fireworks in 2017, we can hold them and put them towards our 2017 4th of July fireworks, so there's really no risk for us, it just kind of cleans things up for us, saves a little time on both ends for us and the distributor.
Do they get stale?
Not in that timeframe.
Okay.
If it was a matter of years, that could be a concern.
Years, okay.
But in a six-month period, it shouldn't be an issue.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the expenditure of $2,000 for the fireworks for the Icebox Days.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion. Have any requests?
Sure. I would like you to save one can and use it to start the Arrowhead 135 race, if we could set one off at Cary Park when that race begins. And so I don't know if we purchase one more can, or if we, I think we just take one from there and...
We can do that?
Have that...
Good idea.
I don't remember the timeframe, is that the end of January?
It's at 7:00 AM on the, and that's the next weekend after this, so it would be January the 28th, would be the 29th, it's on a Monday.
Further discussion with regard to the purchase? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried and contract is approved to purchase the fireworks for Icebox Days and the Arrowhead 135. Thank you. Item number five is to approve the order in the matter of the hazardous house located at 105 12th Street. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the order.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Question on the motion or the order? None? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, and the approval is given for that order. And then item number six is similar in that it's approve the order in the matter of a hazardous house located at 705 8th Street.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion on the motion there or the order to remove that building?
Mr. Mayor? I still don't see, I know that they walked through on the 10th, and I realize that they, the water had been shut off because there was litter in the house, and I'm very familiar with the property, that it is in extreme disarray. My one question is, were they knowledgeable that it was going to be on today's council agenda, that they could come here and speak to us? That's my only question.
Yes, to the city attorney or to the chief?
They have been sent a copy of the order, and I don't know that the order itself indicates when it's going to appear on the agenda of the city council, but they knew it could have been, and in their prior correspondence that they've had with Kelly Myers, it indicated to them if they didn't make the corrections within a timeframe, then this would be the next step. I would, I would say they probably have not been told tonight's the night to be on the agenda. However, even after the passing of this order, they have a period of time to come forward and make the repairs, and if they sign off on it and agree to it, then it's done at city expense. If we have to go continue and go through the legal process and take this to district court, then the cost of tearing down the home gets placed on the tax roll. And I think there's delinquent taxes anyway, so it's just going to add to that, but it would be something that if anybody were to redeem the property from the state after it's gone forfeit, that could be recouped at a later date. But I would say they probably don't know that we're dealing with it tonight unless they saw the agenda, you know.
Further discussion with regard to the order? And this structure has been the discussion here before, it's also, I know that Chief Manasa and Kelly Myers have both been at that home a number of times and have had discussions with the property owners prior to it coming here. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried and order is approved. Thank you. Item number seven is to approve the revised Minnesota vacant land purchase agreement between the City of International Falls and James and Catherine Miggins.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the purchase agreement? Or second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Question, city attorney?
I would advise the council that Jim and Kathy have already signed the agreement, so they're fine with it. We've ended the old agreement in several ways. One, we've made payments, a two-part payment, which was really at the request of Mr. Miggins, with the first half being paid July 1st and the second half being paid in January, that way they can spread any taxable gain they have over a two-year period. And before, we had a contingency on it that it had to qualify 35 wetland credits, which we know is now not going to happen, and so that contingency was... Have had discussions with Dave Serrano and Charlie LaDuke, and they are forwarding this new signed agreement as part of a packet to Bowser and the Army Corps to get this all completed. It would be my recommendation that the council approve the...
Can you tell me when Bowser will finish with this?
No, I wish I could.
I thought Bowser had given approval on this one, but was the Army Corps that hadn't?
I, I'm not sure about that.
Is that the city administrator?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yes, yeah, I think Bowser had given us their approval of the previous 35 credits, but the Army Corps said no. Further discussion or questions for the city attorney with regard to the purchase agreement? Question?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried and purchase agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number eight is approve the agreement between Boise White Paper LLC and the city to approve the annexation subject to waiving the road improvement costs for a portion of parcel 22-036-31000 if the Moonlight Rock Road is improved in the future.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. City attorney, you drafted this agreement?
It was actually drafted by the city administrator, and I reviewed it, but it is acceptable in my opinion.
And on the map, it's only that portion of the hash-marked areas that would be annexed?
That is correct. Currently, the existing parcel is an L-shaped parcel that goes where the crosshatch area, but it also includes that small rectangle immediately to the east or to the right of the crosshatch area. And in speaking with the Public Works Director, he indicates it would be relatively problem-free to try and separate that parcel into two. What's being proposed for annexation would be the crosshatch area, which is immediately abutting and due south of the multimodal district, and it links the multimodal district up with a 40-acre parcel that the city owns to the south of the railroad tracks over there. The reason why this is before the council is we had met almost two months ago now with a representative of MD&amp;W Railroad, and this was a request that they had made, that they not be subject to future road costs because they really see no value to an upgraded road because they already have access to the Moonlight Rock as well as the railroad tracks that are adjacent to it. So, prepared this at their request and also approves it, will forward it for their review and approval. Hopefully, it won't require any modifications because it's relatively straightforward.
Now, the area to the east of the present multimodal, that small section has not been annexed as of this point? Or that whole L has not been...
That's correct, no.
That's in the shaded, yellow shaded, that has not been annexed yet?
Everything that's in yellow, excuse me, would be proposed to be annexed. The crosshatch area is an area that we would be adding to the discussion that we had back in January when the city council conducted a public hearing with the public, and we would not be including the full L-shaped parcel, but just the area that's crosshatched. The remaining, it's roughly, it is 170 feet east of the multimodal east property line, and that area would retain ownership by Boise White Paper.
So, when would we be considering the annexation of that multimodal area and the area to the south of the rail line in the crosshatch? When would we see that coming to the council?
Well, the council had authorized moving forward with that, and we want to try and get this agreement adopted, and as soon as that is, then we'll come forward with a joint resolution that needs to be adopted by the county, and there's some of these properties that also have, require, or need to be put into an ordinance form for the council to move forward with the annexation. Ultimately, it has to be reviewed by an administrative law judge to approve the annexation. Possible after the agreement's executed by Boise.
Further questions or discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Now vote yes, motion is carried and agreement is approved to send to Boise White Paper for their approval. Other business under new business? We'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of items that we'll have on the agenda next month related to, more related to the Economic Development Authority regarding the Great Northern Transmission Line, and it'll be coming across property that the EDA owns and trying to grant an easement to allow them to proceed with that project. So, that'll be on the EDA agenda at the end of the meeting next on June 20.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Been working a lot with Kelly Myers and Adam Manasa on... Been working a lot with Kelly Myers and Adam Manasa on the hazardous building issues. Got the two orders that the council passed tonight. Also, we have gotten approval to move forward from the bank that had been delayed to get an inspection of the Morisso home. And Judge LaDuke is back, he had a knee replacement, so he's been off work. And he heard the initial hearing, so he has to be the judge that does it. He's due back about the middle of July. So that would be approved at that time. And so probably sometime in August, that property would be able to come down. We also have another property where homeowner has agreed to sign an authorization. We had sent it to him, they didn't sign it. They wanted more time to remove the personal property items from the home. So we set the new deadline to remove the items is the middle of June. Called them in the presence of Kelly and Adam and promised to sign it and return it to us. So hopefully, we'll have that structure removed as well. So things seem to be progressing quite well with regard to the hazardous house issue.
Thank you. Those blighted issues certainly take down a neighborhood, and I thank you for your efforts, Chief Manasa and Kelly. I think that's very, very helpful to clean some of those items up.
They work very hard at it, I know that. And we've, I would say this year, we're on top of it more quickly. In the past, sometimes, when we had the authorizations and things, a number of months go by to try to get the property owner to do it on their own. But we've sped up the timeframe now, and we're bringing it to the council much more quickly than we previously did a few years ago.
Very good process, thank you. Any further questions for the city attorney or comments? Thank you, we'll go to department heads and chief Musich.
Here, council, activity report for May. Had our annual bike rodeo at Harry Park at the beginning of the month. Officers participated in the veterans parade detail, attended college party put on by the fire hall. Officers, two of them have completed field training, and the third one. Also, two of our officers put on bike safety practice. Also, I neglected, I've been working on... Calls for service, general calls, 391, traffic stops, 90, medical assists, 32, ICR-related calls, 80, for a total of 593 this May. Last May, we had 361, so... Traffic stops are a lot to do with that, we have a lot more traffic stops.
Understand that some of your officers were involved in the issues this weekend, and certainly appreciate their good work there.
By a number of agencies, we played a smaller role, a very important role, that I can't really go into, but...
Fair enough.
Yeah. It was a safe outcome for the community and for the...
It's primarily drugs, right? That's really what's causing the problem?
Yeah, and also, you mentioned the drugs. The mental health issues are, as I said a number of times, it's a statewide problem. It's a very serious problem here. We had a gentleman from out of the area, they signed a hold on him, I believe he's still... Oxygen him on at the hospital. Kind of come to the end of the world here, and we don't...
Don't have any crisis bits?
No, in the state, it's really a serious...
Counselor Dova.
I got a question. How does the call system work? Because I know our area residents were called about the potential fugitives in the area. Could you explain how that system works?
Well, normally, we go through the, one of the dispatchers, or a couple of them might handle the, the department heads gets a hold of it.
Based off of landlines, or is it based off of...
It's landlines, it's cell phone lines. Any registered to be ever...
Everbridges, if you remember, we, two, three summers ago instituted it, and most of that, so you have to sign up for it, you can get it like that. And they put the numbers in, and they can break it down to areas, and that's how, like Mike described it. That night, I'm sure the sheriff, undersheriff, called dispatch, and the dispatcher's put it out in the form of a text message and voice message.
I'll tell you what, it was a great service, especially getting people alerted to the area. And I was just seeing the response between Facebook, conversation, speaking with people. I mean, it's a wonderful service, the way that it was executed, so kudos to both the police department and the sheriff's department, because that was very, very good to alert people in the area.
As soon as we're talking about, I'd like to also commend the city officers in the colony, sheriff's deputies that worked well together, my staff up in the dispatch and jail that was close to being overwhelmed, but they had more people come in, and the outside agencies that came to help. And like Mike said, it was a team effort, and it went as well as it could, and everybody worked together.
And thank you, chief, for your work on vehicles, and blighted vehicles, getting some of those cleaned up in the community. It all adds together. Further questions or comments for Chief Musich? Thank you for the fine report. To the Chief Manasa and the Fire and Ambulance Department, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilors, my report for the month of May. We did have five fire department call-outs. Three were city responses, two were rural, and then we had one false alarm activation that I responded to. Our monthly fire meeting was on the 19th, where we held a regular business meeting. We trained on firefighter rehab and fire extinguishers that night. Also this month, we participated in, well, we have to do our required fit tests and physicals for the fire and ambulance. That's a two-day event up here for us, where they go through and get their annual testing. And then we also had the fire truck in Boise again for the annual shutdown, clean the clarifier. It actually went very well, I think we're done in one day. I think we had a little bit of setup and a little bit of takedown, but had it done in about a 12-hour period, which is better than normal. Ambulance for the month of May, we had 82 911 calls, 47 transfers, for a total of 129, compared to May of last year at 113. So our totals for 2016 are 382 911s, 231 transfers, and 613 total calls. Again, our monthly meeting and training was on the 11th of May with a regular business meeting, and then we trained on IOs, IVs, and then Narcan. And then a note on the Narcan, we will be, our county sheriff has adopted taking Narcan for their officers, and that's the anti-opiate administrative. Somebody's on opiates, we can give the Narcan and take them down right away, take their highway, basically. It's a good thing for first responders. I have talked with Chief Musich about it, and we did discuss that the sheriffs are at a better response for that, being that they are so far out. Ambulance in town has a pretty quick response. So as of right now, it's going to be implemented in the county, not in the city yet, if ever. Further discussions on that. But, so we are getting the sheriffs up to speed on that. Deputies, excuse me. Blight for the month of May, we did 11 grass tags, 17 junk tags, 21 autos, one structure, and two for house numbers, for a total of 52 tags. And then the follow-up to that is letters sent if they don't respond to the tagging process. So we had five blight letters, four grass letters, just for a total of nine in the month of May. And I'm projecting we're going to have probably as much, if not more, this month already at this point. So again, the grass is growing now, so we're getting a little busier with that, and...
Get the rain to stop so we can mow.
Yeah, that proves to be a problem. It's hard to enforce that when mother nature doesn't cooperate.
It is growing. Very good. Questions for Chief Manasa? I guess, so the Narcan will be handled by the paramedics?
Our paramedics have carried Narcan for over a year now, so they have had it. I believe it was Dave Baker, Steve's Law, I think is the name of it, that went through to make it available for any emergency responder, so a first responder group, law enforcement officials, anything like that can carry these kits. Through that law, they made it readily available, so they're cheap to get, the training is easy, relatively cheap, I say that. So through the Arrowhead EMS Association is who we got the kits from to supply the sheriff with, and then when they use a kit, we will resupply them that way. It is relatively safe for a first responder, law enforcement agent. The downsides are very limited. It, there's hardly any, it's, they either come to, or if they're not afflicted by the opiates, it's really no recourse, or it doesn't affect them any other way if they make a wrong decision, being that they aren't on an opiate, it's not harmful to the person, so it is relatively safe.
How many Narcan units have you used in the last year?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say five.
Five?
That's just...
Doesn't seem like an epidemic.
Not a lot, but they are valuable when you need them. People that abuse this, they will actually go into respiratory arrest. So it'll be a code situation where they're not responsive or not breathing, you administer the drug and the Narcan to combat the opiates, and they'll come to. So it is a very, very good drug medication.
Further questions for the chief? Very good report, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Up to good work there. Move to reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
I don't have a report, but I'd just like to add on to Chief Musich's comment about the crisis that there really is in Minnesota for mental health. Beds in crisis, beds, I mean, it's all over, and unfortunately, when they don't know what else to do with them, a lot of times, they put them in jail, and a jail like Koochenee County is not equipped. We don't have the money, they're training the staff to deal with somebody that has severe psychotic issues, which we do just about on a daily basis, now with some sort, the number of people that are on medications for mental illness. And it's, we do the best we can here. We do in the jail, the police, ambulance, prison, like I said, we're so far away, and it's hard to even find a bed. And along with Adam on the Narcan, it is a very good drug to have for people that overdose on opiates. It's, I don't want to say it's easy to use, but it's so easy to use, I was at training, at a class, and I mean addicts themselves carry it in case their friend starts to overdose. One thing, along with overdose, people are afraid to call if they're doing drugs, doing heroin, whatever, and their friends overdose, they're afraid to call for help because they're afraid that they're going to get arrested, and that can happen. So I just, those are all part of the...
It can't happen?
No, there's a lot, they cannot, if they're calling for help. And I would trust, most police officers wouldn't arrest somebody that's calling to help their friend that's ODing from, also.
That's it.
My understanding that they're trying to secure additional beds in the region from Duluth?
Yeah, because the closest ones right now is Hibbing, but I can't remember the last time.
You had a bit?
No, right now, we have three transports going, two today, while they came from Minneapolis, going back to Minneapolis. Then the lady's got to go to Fargo to pick somebody up tomorrow, and somebody had to go either to Minneapolis or Fargo, grab first, pick up a guy for court, then someone else had to bring him up today. This is all in one day, because of course, the other had to come back to court, you know? So yeah, so we do a lot of transporting.
Further, boards, commissions?
I have a couple things. One of them is that Bruce Carmen will be here the 21st of this month to talk about his development plans for the aquaponic farm. And I would like to have him meet with the advisory board that morning, so I'd like to see that scheduled. And then on the 24th, it's not council business, but I'm having a 95th birthday for my mother, and her 99-year-old sister, and her 90-year-old sister are coming from San Francisco. So I'm having that on the 24th, 80 people. And then on the 25th, is our first collection event in Eastport. So, you know, as part of that housing, residential, commercial building. So on the 26th, I'll be drinking a cocktail. So there, that's my month.
What to look forward to, that's very good, thank you. The infrastructure committee has met, and we'll have a number of recommendations at the June 20 meeting. But we do have one that we would like to pass on to the counselors who are serving on the recreation commission, and that would be to bring a request for the 8th Street Rink facility to have a caretaker in 2016 and 2017 winter months. And I know that, you know, that would probably play into their budget as they get, you get into working the budget, but if, on behalf of the committee, Counselor Dova and I were requesting that you would take that to the rec. commission for their consideration. We think the success, and we had two citizens that were here for the infrastructure committee, and the success of the 8th Street Rink utilization by groups and individuals was sufficient enough that we believe that the rec. commission ought to reinstall the caretakers there. We are, we will at the next meeting have some requests for information on the improvements to the rink. They will be taking and doing new boards and poles at the hockey rink, that was already budgeted for this year. That will be taking place, but we also have requests on a waterline extension and another light for the general skating rink. So those items will be coming forth at the June 20 meeting. And we'll have others besides that, but just asking the counselors to consider taking that to the rec. commission for your meeting.
I'll need some information, and I would like to know what the usage has been, and report on that. As a matter of fact, I think it would be helpful if somebody from the infrastructure committee, you know, firsthand information coming forth to the committee rather than routing it through a conduit such as myself. I mean, I don't mind doing it, but I think it's clearer and more efficient if you just appeared for the rec. commission.
When is the meeting?
When is the next meeting? It's the 3rd of every month, 3rd Wednesday at 4:00. No, 5:45, yeah. Sorry, 5:45.
Wednesday?
That's me.
That's the 15th. County committee, I think, was going to meet. Five, so...
That'll be their first meeting. Great. Further to come before, council committees, boards, and commissions. Further to come before council committees, boards, and commissions. Thank you, anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Okay, not having that. Correspondence, it's in the packet, and then the next regular city council meeting is Monday, June 20th, 4:30 PM. There's nothing further to come for the council, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.